Muscatine City Council will come to order. Greg, would you do a roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilmembers, Brad.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Chahade. Natfig. Fitzgerald. And Raywell.
Here.
For present, your honor.
Very good. And we're going to begin with you as we review tonight the city's response to the ATE issue.
Yes, your honor. Draft response. I may have a couple of minor changes. I'll send council out a final version before we send it. Hope to send it out either tomorrow or early next week, Monday or Tuesday at the very latest. Thought I'd run through just a couple of the ma-- well, maybe more than a couple of the major points in the document tonight. And then if there's anything council can think of that's missing or we haven't touched on, we worked on this with Brett, Phil, myself, Matt Burke and Aaron Clanton, the city attorneys, put this together. So I'm just going to start. I'm not going to go through the history. Obviously, I think we're all aware of the history, but I do want to point out several, I think, important facts in the document. Thirty-two percent decrease in violations from 2011 to 2012. Thirty percent decrease in crashes at intersections between 2010 and 2011.
What was that percentage?
Thirty percent. It's on page three, second paragraph. A fourteen percent decrease in violations from 2012 to 2013, and another twenty-seven percent decrease in motor vehicle crashes from 2012 to 2013 overall. It's had a positive impact on traffic safety issues. There's been a substantial reduction in speed and red light violations at the intersections throughout the community. Another important aspect of the ATE cameras is the Amber Alert portion, and that has been activated while the cameras have been in use to track down license plates, for example. We've also used it, I believe, in other cases, I believe, actually in theft or robbery cases as well where we're looking for vehicle license plates. So it's a very important tool for the, from public safety perspective or for the police department's perspective. Couple of other items. I think it was, needs to be pointed out that for the University Drive intersection, speed and speed reduction specifically has always been the priority. So again, we had a partial year when that started, when the program started, and we had just under thirteen thousand citations at that time. And as of today, that's down to about eight thousand citations per year. So it's had a dramatic impact on speed at that intersection. I think that's very important that it's been down about five thousand citations over that time period annually. Very, very important. I'm on page five for your reference. The evaluation also indicates that the ATE unit at the University Drive location must be removed because it's located approximately eight hundred and thirty feet after a lower speed limit sign, reduction from fifty-five to forty-five mile an hour, which is a violation of the administrative code that was adopted by IDOT. However, we thought it was important to note that IDOT designed the layout for the University Drive intersection. They installed the signage, and there are ten different signs warning of speed reduction and ATE cameras within about a mile of that intersection. Eight of those have orange flags on tops, on top of those signs.
Greg.
Yes?
Why can't you just go out and move that sign up a little bit if it's too close?
That's a very good, very good question and very good point. At the time, at the time of the installation, it complied with IDOT regulations, and we did, the police chief did request that they simply move the sign back to the requisite number of feet. They failed to respond, and it failed to do that, IDOT. Specifically, we asked if they, that they either just simply relocate the signs or that the signs be grandfathered, and they failed to respond to our request. Couple of other points regarding regulation enforcement. Iowa cities are given the power of self-government within the city code, excuse me, within state code. We exercise the power and perform multiple functions, public safety being one of those. City of Muscatine is actually a special charter city, which gives us additional authority within the city, within the, within the state and city codes. And we've pointed that out here in the response. To that end, the local jurisdictions presented safety concerns due to a number of speed and red light violations at these intersections, and the city is, clearly has a vested interest in safety and well-being of its citizens and its law enforcement officers at these intersections. The city has limited resources, and ATEs actually acts as what's known as a force multiplier. Rather than putting an officer out there twenty-four seven at those intersections, the ATE cameras allow us to utilize those officers for community safety, other community safety concerns within the city limits. ATEs also enhance our ability to exercise, again, our power of protecting its citizens and officers as authorized by Iowa code. Traffic studies funded by IDOT, known as C-Tree or for the Center for Transportation, Research and Education, support the use of ATE cameras. And that, again, was funded by IDOT, and both of those C-Tree reports support the use of ATE cameras. Iowa code does not grant IDOT the discretion to dictate the method or means in which a municipality or its police officers enforce laws upon the roads within the municipality. ATE cameras, again, have been very successful within the city of Muscatine. Traffic enforcement and regulation at these intersections is a public safety issue for the city, and pursuant to Iowa code, the city has found that ATEs are an effective tool to supplement the city's regulation. We do not believe IDOT has the authority to regulate the use of ATEs within city limits. Rules were adopted by IDOT clearly violate Iowa code and the ability for cities and IDOT to exercise concurrent jurisdiction over primary roads within the municipality. The rules circumvented the legislative process, and that, that's really the core of the Sioux City lawsuit that is currently going on between Sioux City and the IDOT at this point. We look for that to come in May, the results, hopefully. Again, it's our position that IDOT has no authority to regulate the city's use of ATE cameras within the city's jurisdiction. I think it's important to note that the IDOT memorandum noted one additional motor vehicle accident or crash at the University Drive intersection. I believe it was a property damage, not a personal injury accident. However, the report, the draft report that'll be going out here shortly will show you that those traffic accidents are back down to the usual ten that was previously reported. But again, the focus at university has always been speed and not the accident issue. Accidents, of course, are important, and that's where the red light cameras come in specifically and especially for those intersections. I don't know that I really need to point anything else out that's in the document as well. I've kind of tried to run through real quickly some of the highlights. The cameras are effective, they're working, and IDOT does not have the authority to regulate the cameras in our position within the city limits. And we hope to wrap this up, post in the council a final copy, and get that out to IDOT either tomorrow, Monday, Tuesday at the very latest. I think it's good to go. There may be one additional item we'd like to address, and the report that's coming out that we present annually to IDOT, we have to summarize the previous year's activities. And in that document, I think it's very, it's important to note, the amount of traffic at the University Avenue intersection is dramatically higher than at any of the other four intersections. However, the accidents in comparison are very close to the other four intersections. In fact, today, we don't have, necessarily have traffic counts for that intersection. However, the chief was able to get the March traffic count from IDOT or from Getzo.
Getzo.
Getzo, from our contractor. And westbound at the University Avenue intersection for March alone had over two hundred and eighteen thousand vehicles pass through that signal. So we've seen a significant and important reduction in speed at that intersection doing exactly what it's supposed to do. That's kind of a quick summary. I did talk with Councilman Natfig on his way to Des Moines today, and he just wanted me to share his strong support for our response and for the efforts that we've put forward.
Want to field questions?
I, we certainly can, and Assistant Chief Sergeant is here as well.
Greg, it appears that the city has a very strong position in case. What do you suppose that Iowa DOT's response would be? What's their argument?
Good question. I don't, I don't think they have one. That's our point, and, and we, that, I mentioned the Sioux City case, which may give us a more definitive answer on that topic in, in May. The administrative rules portion is really, kind of goes, goes to the heart of the matter and whether or not IDOT versus public safety and who has the authority to regulate without, where there's been no legislation. And that's really the, I guess, the point, is there has been no legislation, and where there is legislation, not specifically on topic with ATEs, but where there is legislation, it says that the city and IDOT have concurrent jurisdiction over those primary roads within the city's limit. And so we, we think they're acting outside the scope of their authority.
You know, everything I've read, I tend to agree with you. This document, I, I think what concerns me the most is, is having read the report and recommendations from IDOT, which is terribly deficient. I mean, it's, they cite three small pieces of information, and that's the basis for wanting us to do this. I think it's our decision, and if, if they're going to, to make that kind of a recommendation, it ought to be a complete analysis. There's absolutely no information about traffic, traffic counts, and I don't know how you can make a serious determination about this without knowing the volume going through the intersection. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I, you know, I, I don't know how to be more critical of what they've done, and, and that's exactly where I'm going with this. Now, of the four members here tonight, I don't, I think only one of you was on the council when this was approved. Is that fair? You were on the council?
Right.
Yeah. So the three of us, the, the rest of us, didn't have a vote when all of this happened. And I'm not, I'm not backing away from that in any means. I do think that the ATEs are meeting a need. We've seen people change their driving habits. We've, we've seen accidents, statistics that are favorable, and we've seen declining numbers of, of citations. You know, I, I just don't understand why they're doing this, and, and maybe we'll get clarity out of the lawsuit now in Sioux City. You know, I, I don't know, but...
If not, if not, we certainly have pointed out in the document the deficiencies of their, of their report as well, and maybe at a minimum, we can get a better response.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going on record as saying, if you're going to make this kind of, that kind of an assessment and recommendation, it ought to be an honest assessment.
You don't expect a response, I bet, until after the Sioux City case is settled?
Well, the chief submitted, Brett, Phil, do you remember when that initial response was submitted to IDOT requesting that they either move or grandfathered in it? And they've yet to respond to our request. The deadline for response for this is, I believe, on the seventeenth, and we'll respond in a timely fashion, even though DOT has failed to respond to our comments and questions.
I think that they're working the way they were intended to work. I think traffic has slowed down. I know that since I got my ticket, I slowed down, so, and I think everybody else does too. And after all, you're breaking the law, so you may as well pay it.
You're absolutely right, and I should have pointed that out, and it is in the document. I think that's very important to point out, is that folks that are running a red light or speeding through there, they're not getting a citation until they're going over ten mile an hour over the speed limit. So they're breaking the law, and we've given them very good leeway. It's a civil citation. It does not go on your record. And if, if a police officer was to pull you over for the same offense out there, you're going to be paying substantially more than the seventy-five dollar ticket for going ten mile an hour over. Off the top of your head, any idea what that, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars?
And it goes on your record.
And it goes on your criminal, on your record, and so...
Greg, that brings up another point about these. Why is the fine different in different counties?
Municipalities have the ability to regulate within their, the borders and their boundaries. That has been an issue, I believe it was a year or two ago at the state legislature, and the council at the time indicated that, and I believe in the resolution itself that was passed, the council supported a unified fee structure if that was to come forward across the state.
Isn't Sioux City the largest municipality that collects the most?
I believe their, their fines are much higher than ours, yes.
I didn't get a ticket there.
Bob, comments?
Nothing tonight, your honor, except if you break the law, that you need to pay the bucks.
And I got a phone call this afternoon from a young lady who highly recommended a speed limit, a speed limit changing sign much the same as the one on Cedar Street. And so if, if we ever modify that one mile stretch of road, something to consider.
Absolutely. But, and, you know, as you and I have both pointed out numerous times, ten signs over a mile.
Eight red flags.
Eight red flag, orange flags out there. There's, there's ample warning coming into Muscatine, so...
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay, shall we move along, council? Item number three, review of city code, document and appendices. Would that be you, Nancy?
I'll take that.
Okay.
Don't mind. The, unless Nancy wants to get up. This is our final handoff after we've gone through a review with each section with city council, and we're coming back with some clarification and several topics which I'll run through. We've added the appendix, A, B, C, and D, which I'd encourage you to look at. If you may recall that that is, was going to be a, that's a summary of all the fines, fees, penalties within the code, so that, that can be adopted by resolution in the future. It's also handy and easily accessible, and I think it's easy to understand as well. Pulls everything out of, out of the code. The, we heard back from the city attorney, actually, this morning, and our plan would be to begin the process going forward. I have had no additional comments or questions after our last handoff from council. We'll start off with a public hearing, which is technically not required for the city code, but we think it's important to have a public hearing. And there are two portions of the code that actually require public hearing, and that's the adoption of the international code, two thousand and fifteen international code, and so...
Talking about the building code.
Building code, yes. I'll point that out here in just a moment. Changes since we last handed it off to city council, following community developments presentation, we have incorporated the rental housing registration program, chapter eight dash, title eight, chapter five, in the city code. So that is now in there, and the definitions have been amended as well as the language to incorporate the registration program. Five dash ten, under peddlers, appendix B now notes that the insurance is not only required of this, excuse me, that insurance is only required if the activity is on public property for peddlers, solicitors, transient merchants. There's a requirement for that, was not clarified that it was supposed to be, the requirement is simply for public property.
Greg, so are, are we saying that the peddler, the panhandler wants to have certificate of insurance?
This is talking, there's solicitors, transient merchants. I don't believe the peddler portion requires the, the insurance.
They all do.
They all do? Okay. They all do. There is also a bond requirement for certain merchants on city property.
Who's, who's going to regulate that? Is a police officer going to come up to a panhandler and say, "Where's your insurance papers?"
Those are regulated through the city clerk's office, and then it's typically a complaint based, and then the police department is the department that responds to peddlers, or we get, often get complaints of solicitors going door to door in town and making sure that they have their appropriate paperwork. That's a common practice now.
It seems around McDonald's area, it's starting back up again.
It's...
With their cardboard signs and asking for money.
It may be a, it's kind of a free speech versus insurance issue, I guess, and it may get challenged at some point in time, but it's, it's an effort to meet, I guess, the goals of trying to make sure that people are, if they're on city property, that they're, they're covered in some way, shape or form. I guess we'll see.
So this summer that we're going to start enforcing?
We may be a bit of a test case here, but we'll, we'll give it a shot.
Okay.
I believe, I believe you indicated it was complaint based.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Six dash two alarms, took out reference to direct alarms, which we no longer have. Minor item, five dash nine pawn brokers added the bond requirement back in that we, that we previously had and was missed. Three one six, outdoor dining, based on council's review, we've added that in to the city code with insurance requirements. We've distinguished between sidewalk and street platform, sidewalk cafes and street platforms, that is in there as well. Thirteen dash one, utilities, MPW has gone through and, and suggested some modifications to the language relations, relation to MP&amp;W, and we've incorporated most of those changes. Title eight, building code, you'll note that, that entire section now has the two thousand and fifteen international building code, mechanical and plumbing as well. We've asked the city to determine, city attorney to determine if we need a separate public hearing on the issue. And so what we'll be doing is simply incorporating that into the city code public hearing for one overall public hearing on the topic. Again, appendices A through D have been added now, and you can run through that schedule of fines and fees. Most of those changes in that section are the result of insurance or legal review and suggesting modifications to the, either the insurance or bond requirement, although I believe all the bond requirements are still at five grand. So mainly the insurance requirements. There were some minor fees that were at five or ten dollars that were raised to twenty dollars in there, but I'd encourage you to look through that schedule of fees and fines in A through D.
I just appreciate the fact that you did this because it's so much easier to find it. You know, I've spent too much time hunting and packing through code, trying to figure out what cost what. So this is a huge improvement.
Excellent. City attorney Nancy and city staff went through that, and, and I think it'll be a handy tool to have. Once the code's adopted and on the website, then we'll begin creating HTML links to take you from one portion to the other portion and to the fines and fees to make it a much easier document to use.
How many years has it been since it was updated?
Well, the zoning ordinance is seventy-four, and that'll be coming next, and we'll be talking about that and the actual city code less, well, I mean, we, we update and modify sections at a time, but a comprehensive update? Eighties? Let's see. Other changes, title two, chapter two, civil service term limit was removed, that's not required by state, state code. And let's see. So, next steps, our plan would be to put, place this on, did we say next week or first meeting in April? Uh, May, excuse me. For, I think we're going to, we were going to place it on to set a public hearing at next, next week's council meeting, and then hold the public hearing subsequent to that. So, begin the process next week. Those are the major changes in there that have been incorporated. Encourage you to look through the appendix as well. Any questions?
Have you had much in the way of citizen feedback on any of this?
From our public sessions that we had?
Yeah.
No, I haven't.
No questions, council? Okay, very good. Thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
Let's move along to item four, the review of sidewalk policy. Randy, is that you?
Yep. Randy's on his way up. It's been a topic since, I believe, we started talking about this two budget sessions back on sidewalks, and this last fiscal year, you may remember, we included fifty thousand in the budget, and we did again for this next fiscal year as well for sidewalk improvements. We got a grant from Wellmark for fifty thousand dollars, and those projects are starting and underway. We've had one public meeting, I believe, with adjacent residents so far. But really, the goal here is to, is to go from an, to go from a complaint-based sidewalk program to an active sidewalk program, one of maintenance and inspection. And to do that, there's really three major components. That's dealing with, how do we deal with new sidewalks, new sidewalk construction, whether that be projects or that are associated with projects or just sidewalk projects alone? How do we deal with existing sidewalks? ADA ramps throughout the area? The funding for these programs, the specifications, and then specifically, I guess the last step will be implementing a regular inspection program. Now, we've given ourselves a little bit of flexibility in that. I believe it's, we say in no, no less than ten years in the, in the policy, but to allow us to utilize current staff and be able to get through it and do a regular inspection program throughout the community and make those improvements where needed. And we, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Randy.
Any questions?
All right, just, just, I guess I'm not going to turn over to Randy quite yet. Just, just so you know, again, this is, this is kind, this is a handoff again tonight and giving an opportunity to read through the policy, mark it up, ask any questions you might have. We'll come back to council before we obviously ask you to take action on it, and, and so we can have a good discussion after you've had an opportunity to read through it at your leisure and come back in May, in-depth session, and answer any questions that you might have, and certainly take any that you have tonight as well. Sorry, Randy.
The whole process is starting officially next Thursday when we'll bring before the city council a resolution setting a public hearing for the plans and specifications for five sidewalk areas that we want to construct this construction season, and want to have those done before school starts at the end of August. And as Greg mentioned, it's a fifty thousand dollar Wellmark grant, fifty thousand dollar local max, and we have a hundred thousand dollars put into this. And council basically is kind of committed to, let's continue with this process, fifty grand every year. grand every year, so we keep working on our sidewalk, on our sidewalk infrastructure. We have not had an inspection program, I'll bet, for 20-plus years. We respond to complaints, but as far as actually getting out and systematically going through the community, we have not done that, and we want to reactivate that. I think most of you saw a presentation here a couple of years ago by our summer engineering intern on the ADA ramps, and how she went out and actually put that on the laptop, using the computer technology, which helps an awful lot in documenting what the problem is, and quite frankly, streamlines the notification process and the way that we get things fixed. Probably the question that a lot of people will ask is who's going to pay for all of this? And there are already three funding sources. If it's an existing sidewalk and you're in violation, and violations, the policy defines them as displacement and cracking, spalling, and obstructions, and you're required to fix that, and then again, there is, there are options for how you can fix that, with crack filling, mud jacking, something called shaving, in some cases, that could be done, or replacement. But the existing sidewalk will be at the expense of the adjacent property owner, of the property owner. The new development, where a subdivision's going in, new houses going in, any new construction that is happening, the sidewalk installation will be at the cost of the individual that's putting in the house or the subdivision. All the rest of this is to be funded by the city. For instance, the programs talked about this year, actually, there are gaps that we want to fill, connect, and they're school-centered, so this is part of the Blues Under Initiative, the walking school bus, and so this will be funded by the city. ADA ramps are funded by the city. New construction, so what we did on Cedar Street, what we're going to do with the trail out on Colorado, and sidewalk out there, quite frankly, earlier this week, we had a discussion with our engineering firm that's doing the design on Mulberry, and looked at the sidewalks that will go on both sides of the street, but we want to take them all the way out to Steamboat Way, and if you hadn't noticed, and I'm one who hadn't, down Baton Rouge, the sidewalks in, down just a little ways off Mulberry, but nevertheless, they still in. We want to make that connection and get those connected back. So sidewalk new construction is another way funded at the city's cost. So, all of the plan specifications are part of the state SUDAS program, and basically, we're looking at five-foot sidewalks, four-inch minimum in thickness, six inches, one goes across the driveway, minimum in thickness, and that's, that is pretty much it as far as, there are more specifics in this, but that highlights what we want to do. And we have a lot of sidewalks that need attention. I was, actually, a gentleman sent me a note today, read about us in the newspaper this morning, and said, "I've complained about a particular sidewalk for, you know, a couple of years, and nothing's been done about it." And so we did actually go out and see what he was talking about, and he's spot-on with it, talked to Dave about it, and we'll get something like that corrected. So, there are a lot of places in town, I'm afraid, where the sidewalks need to be upgraded. I would like to point out to the council that part of the comprehensive plan goal is that members of the community should have the opportunity to travel safely to their destination by foot, bike, or by other non-motorized means. The, like I said, things will be school-centered, we'll also be looking at areas where there's a need based on the level of non-motorized traffic, continuity with existing sidewalks, filling these gaps in proximity to places like shopping areas, parks, recreational facilities, and the like. So I think for the most part, I mean, unless you do have questions, that's, that's what our intent is, and, you know, it's a new program, and I think it's long overdue, and we need to get moving forward with it, and the grant helps the catalyst to make this whole thing happen. So, kind of excited about it. Need to have a policy to go by, and that's what you have before you to review, and ultimately either pass on this, or say no, take it back to the drawing board. Questions?
Worked with Bi-State city staff, and putting this together, the city, unless it's part of a major project like the CSO project where we're doing sidewalks, the city's portion is that $50,000 that we budgeted and hope to budget annually, for those infill, those gaps, those safe routes to schools, and to start being able to go through the community and make up those gaps on an annual basis, and work our way through, and that dollar amount can change if, you know, during the budget process. This, this year, we have 50, next year, we have 50 budgeted to start that program, and obviously sidewalks are budgeted, when they're, when they're with a project, we budget through the cost, the associated cost with the project, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay, moving along to item five, review of updates to zoning code and schedule. Andrew, how are you this evening?
Good.
You look nice.
Thank you.
You bet.
Just going to kind of go over real quick, getting the process underway to update our zoning ordinance. As Greg already mentioned, our current zoning ordinance dates from 1974, and this current zoning ordinance was actually structured to implement the 1968 comprehensive plan. In September of 23, we, September of 2013, we adopted a new comprehensive plan. Rewriting the zoning ordinance is the most important step in implementing the vision of the new comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan's going to be the basis of this new zoning ordinance. Staff has now largely completed the initial draft of this, so I'm going to kind of go over the process of where we go from here. This draft is prepared with a couple of major goals in mind. One was to create a document that's flexible enough to adapt to unique and difficult site conditions, and to preserve the unique character of individual neighborhoods. We're also making a major effort to make the zoning ordinance much more user-friendly through things like, we're including a lot of illustrations, where there's a lot of technical specifications that are kind of difficult to understand by text, but are a lot clearer when you have them illustrated in the document. So that'll be a major improvement. And looking, then looking at the actual process to adopting this, we're proposing basically breaking this down into three phases in order to make the review and adoption of this a little simpler. The first phase, in the first phase, we'll address the portions of the zoning ordinance that applies citywide, covering things such as parking, signs, yard regulations. These are the things that are the same, it doesn't matter where you are. And the next two, then, the next two phases will deal with the actual zoning districts. So, in the first phase and all the phases, basically what we're looking at is taking a couple chapters at a time, having the zoning commission first, planning and zoning commission review them, then bringing them to you at the in-depth meeting. Once consensus is reached in all the portions of a phase, we'll then package them up into an ordinance for adoption. So, so as I mentioned, the first phase has to do with the citywide regulations, and the second two deals with the zoning districts. The first set of zoning districts would be what you might consider the standard zoning districts, and this is largely updating the regulations in our current districts and then updating a map, and that's what'll immediately follow the first phase. The third phase is going to be, is we're proposing something that's a little new for this community, and that's form-based zoning, and the feeling is, we feel that this is kind of a necessary tool to fully implement the vision of the comprehensive plan, and just to kind of back up here to explain what a form-based zone, form-based code is, it's a regulation that's intended to foster predictable built results and a high-quality public realm by using physical form rather than the separation of uses, is the organizing principle of the zoning ordinance. So to get in a little more detail, basically, our current more standard zoning ordinance basically regulates things based on density, use, setbacks, parking requirements, and maximum building heights. Those are kind of basically the dimension that each zoning district regulates, one by one. Whereas a form-based code is more interested in the actual physical form of the development, forms like street and building types, build two lines, the number of floors, the percentage of, percentage of built site and frontage specified. And basically, where we see this being used is areas such as downtown historic, downtown historic districts, areas of mixed use, and other areas where our standard kind of zoning tools really don't bring the outcomes we want, and this will be the last piece that we put together. And backing up a little more, I think the first phase will take about six months, and the other ones will follow subsequently. And so we're starting, kind of kicking this off next week with the April P&amp;Z meeting, so if you look forward, probably in May in depth, we'll have some stuff for you to look at.
Great. Any questions, council? Thanks, Andrew.
If you type in "form-based codes," you'll get a ton of resources, but I think you'll find that with the form-based codes and with the, the tools that Andrew mentions on here, making the zoning ordinance much more user-friendly, where you have the drawings and the samples in the, in the packet, or in the code itself, it'll be a much more user-friendly tool, which is kind of a theme here, that we're trying to make it much more user-friendly for staff and especially for the public.
On the agenda, item number six, discussion concerning disposal of property, Dave Gobin. Dave, you look very nice tonight.
I was waiting for those words for now almost a year. You notice you said that because we wore the same colors. Anyway, I've sent in your package a couple of properties. We could use these as examples, but these probably will be the first few that I'd like to address. These are properties that the city already owns. They are vacant lots, and I think you saw the parcels, pictures of them. One is 111 Nebraska Street, and the other one is 1202 Indiana Street. Right now, they are not, since we own them, we don't collect any taxes on them, but yet we have the expense of maintaining them, and we certainly don't want to be in our own nuisance compliance, so it costs the city money to keep these parcels. However, we could sell them and get them back on the tax rolls. For that matter, we could even give them away and get them back on the tax rolls. The point is, I wanted to find out what the council's pleasures are to moving forward with going through the disposition process with properties about vacant lots and things like that. These are two good ones. We have a Butters that may be interested, but I'm not committing them at this particular juncture, but we probably have to go through the public process of putting, you know, putting notices out, getting proposals. We have like, generally, we try to sell property at a buck five a square foot, but there may be cases where that's the top number, and we may end up having to back off if we want to, if our goal is to get it on the tax rolls. So that's really what I wanted to discuss and find out what the council's pleasure is, and the city administrator and myself will prosecute the process to move the, move the properties, and we may find other properties, similar situation going forward.
Really, you know, just, if there's no objections, we'd like to move forward with the public process. Here's two properties that Community Developments identified for disposal, and we'll continue to look for property that's, that there's no reason to keep, no benefit to keep. Here's two good examples. We typically go through the public process, offer it for a dollar five. We have in the past allowed for bidding subsequent to the actual bid opening on parcels, typically commercial parcels. I don't know if we've done that on any residential parcels. Nancy, do you recall? I, you know, I'd suggest we simply go out, go through the public process, offer it for a minimum dollar five, take bids and move through the process as we normally would, unless there's an objection.
Dave, do you know roughly how many parcels you might have, or we might have?
Yeah, how many more are there, other than Iowa fields?
Andrew has a map of, I believe, all the city-owned property in, in the, within the city limits. I don't know when, the last time you've updated that, and, but, you know, as you, as we go through and identify them, I don't know that you have a number off the top of your...
It's not a large, there's probably more, but not that many more.
Right.
Of the ones that are public, that say a little...
Wherever we, wherever we can, the goal is to get them back on the tax rolls and off the public maintenance.
Any number I give you right now is a guess, but there are more than two, I'll say that. The, we do have a map, and I did, last time I saw that map was like in late fall, so it's, it's, it's one of those, it's a real interesting thing, rather than us spending money to maintain them and not getting them on the tax rolls, those seem like to me to be the two main objectives for doing something.
Okay, council, questions at all? Okay, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, item seven is a resolution awarding a contract for the West Hill Sanitary Sewer Project. Phase three to Hagerty Earthworks, and this is an action item. Is there a motion to approve that resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor. Bob, any discussion?
Your Honor, just to be real clear, that we are rejecting the water portion of the bid, and that MPW has indicated that they'll be doing that on their own, at least for year one. Year two and three, they'll evaluate if they continue to do that portion on themselves, or if they go out to bid on, on those portions. Staff is meeting tomorrow with MPW, just to get everything scheduled appropriately and make sure that they coordinate with Mr. Hagerty on the project, and make sure that everything goes smoothly, so.
Any other discussion, council? This is a roll call, beginning with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
And Mike.
Aye.
Question carries for zero. Item eight, resolution approving the contract and bond for the Mad Creek Dredge Line Project. And Greg, you wanted to speak to this first?
Yes, Your Honor, I was hoping that, asking that the council, council's motion be subject to the city administrator finalizing insurance requirements with, with the CP Railroad. We are really close, and I just have a few things we need to, we need to clarify. You may recall, they appeared that there is additional insurance requirements above and beyond just the construction period. We believe we've, we have an understanding that the additional insurance requirements will be the responsibility of the contractor. They are only for the construction period and not for the 20-year period of the license, so the license costs the city $2,000 for the 20-year period. However, the contract language needs to be either cleaned up, or we need to have a supplemental document that Dave and a representative from the CP have been working on. I just want to make sure it's very clear in there what the terms and conditions are of the insurance requirements, so I'd ask that the motion be modified.
Is, is there a motion to approve the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Mike? Second?
Second.
Second, Jeanette. Any additional discussion? This also is a roll call, beginning with Mike.
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Question carries for zero. Okay, down to item number nine, Leadership Muscatine Trailhead Project Presentation. That would be Jimmy Auberg, Tyson Castle, and I don't have the third gentleman's name, I'm sorry.
Jason McRavie.
Jason, nice to have you here tonight.
Well, first of all, thank you for allowing us to get on your agenda and presenting our, our project proposal. My name's Tyson Castle. Jimmy Auberg, Jason McRavie, we're here on behalf of Leadership Muscatine, and our project is proposing a new trailhead at the intersection of Cannon Road and, let's see
There's a power button on the, on the left-hand side, or you can use the arrow buttons.
All right, so we're proposing to have a trailhead at the intersection of Cannon Avenue and River Road. What we're looking to do is establish a shelter, a metal shelter. This particular one is actually a previous Leadership Muscatine project. It's a little bit bigger shelter than what we're proposing. We're proposing a 12-by-12 metal shelter that could encompass such amenities as, here we go, emergency tall, a call tower, a drinking fountain, a vertical large surface board, and picnic tables. The emergency call tower would be something that would be new to Muscatine. There aren't any, anything like that in the, in the area. It would allow for, you know, people to be, provide a little bit more safety. It's, could be possibly a test market for, for the area. One nice amenity would be the drinking fountain. To keep up with the Blue Zones project, there'd be a bottle filler option, as well as the drinking fountain arm is handicap accessible. And the third option has a pet fountain, so you have all the dog walkers along there. So, it's multifunctional and useful, as well as the large surface board would provide, you know, another opportunity to show the trail system, and as well as some of the picnic tables. We're not limited to this particular style, but it's just something that we'd like to go with. You probably asked, or wondering why we chose a specific location. Jimmy will explain a little bit of that. Well, as far as the location goes, I think a lot of the credit actually goes to Andrew. Having a little bit of collaboration in one of the trails team meetings early Tuesday morning, brainstorming ideas on potential locations, and this one really is a great location. It's about halfway in between Weed Park and the riverfront. There's not a lot of other things to enhance the trail at this location, and so we felt pretty strongly about this location. And on the, on the slide there, on the left, you can see the blue, blue line, that would be basically the scope of our project as far as where the amenities might go, some landscaping opportunities, and we'd be looking at putting the actual metal shelter inside of the red box shown there on the screen. And here are just a couple of pictures to show the location a little bit better. This was taken back in December, so it looks a little bit differently now, but essentially today, there's just a parking lot there, and we believe our project will really enhance this particular location and add some nice amenities and increase the use and functionality of the trail system. A little bit of information on, on our budget and what we're looking at as far as income and expenses. So, we have secured actually that, that number up there, the 7,500 is a little bit higher today because of a few other sources that we recently had pledged or secured. But some of the donors that we've already spoken with, Keeping Muscatine Beautiful, Monsanto has been very generous as far as donating labor and other equipment to actually erect the structure. Muscatine Power and Water's also been generous, offering to donate time and materials for power and water connections. There is still a little over $10,000 left that we need to raise. We have several different venues that we're currently seeking funding from, and several grant applications have already been submitted. We're just waiting to hear back on whether or not we've been successful. And as far as our expenses, you can see on the right-hand column a breakdown of what the expenses are, and if there, I guess at this point, are there any questions or comments on, on the budget or our fundraising efforts?
Does the city already own the property?
Yes, the city does own the property.
Another one of those lots.
And to the Park and Rec Commission as well.
Mm-hmm.
The shelter kit, is that $90,000 for materials?
Yes, sir. Yep. And so we would actually supply the labor. We have able-bodied people who are very eager and anxious to, to make this project happen.
Thank you.
That's what was done at the Weed Park Shelter, the last Leadership Muscatine, that was, materials provided, labor, went down there and I think about all got done in a day, if I recollect, so.
Yep. So, as far as partnership roles, did want to share all the members of our project team, so myself, I work for Monsanto. Jason McRevy also works for Monsanto, and Mike Anson and Tyson Castle work for GPC. Margaret Peters works for Kent Corporation, Bill Allen, Muscatine Power and Water, and Jason Walker, Muscatine Community College. So, we have a pretty, pretty good group, pretty high-energy group. We really want to make this project happen, and we also did want to thank a few other people, so the Trails Team has helped us considerably, and Randy Hill has been a great asset helping us out along the way. And also Parks and Rec Board has been supportive of our project. Want to give credit to Rich Climes as well, and of course Andrew for helping us pinpoint the location, and Greg has also been very supportive in helping us develop the project and get it to where it is today. And with that, we'll open it up for any questions.
When do you think that you'll have the money raised and start construction?
Our, our goal is to try to have the shelter with amenities constructed by the end of the summer. That's our goal.
The picture of the telecommunications tower looked like it had a solar panel on top of it, is that right? Or is that just weird to me?
Yes.
Yes.
So, there's a phone line there, and what's the purpose of the solar tower, or the solar panel?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Other than it looks cool.
It looks, it looks very cool. We're, we're focusing on being green.
Okay.
But I don't have an answer for that question right now.
Must be some kind of lighting there or something.
We talked with Verizon, and they would be able to provide the service for it, so there wouldn't actually need a, you know, a direct line to, to the unit if needed, but there's, you know, there are other options, but this is the one that we're proposing.
Solar, solar unit, okay.
So, are you three gentlemen cyclists, or are you runners, or?
I know Jason and I are both cyclists. I, I go there with my, my family. We, you know, we tool around on our two-wheel, you know, stroller, and you'll see us there on a big double stroller up and down, you know, river, you know, the riverfront and whatnot. So, we, we all do utilize the trail system, so that's kind of why we did, you know, choose this project.
Very good. Council, any other questions?
And no objections to proceeding?
Sure.
I think it's a great project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, council, item 10 on the agenda, comments.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Bob?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Nothing, thank you.
Actually, I have a point of clarification. We, there's a lot of information tonight, but when we got into the discussion about the sidewalk policy, there's an addendum there that talks about the trees, and there's a schedule of fines in there. Is that, are those fines enforceable, or does that have to be a matter of code?
Trees about what?
There's Appendix B to the sidewalk policy talks about the trees and clearances and things like that.
Yeah, they're, right, it's part of the obstruction.
Yeah.
And if they do not meet the code, and we have to go out and cut them, then we will sell that cost back against the property owner, but they will be notified that they're to cut those backs, so.
I guess, I saw it as a policy and not code. Is there a difference, or?
The, the policy references the code as far as its authority to do.
I see what you're saying, okay. All right.
And also, I want to comment on the presentation by these gentlemen, it's great, and particularly the dog, pet fountain, because when Mike and I start jogging this summer down on the riverfront and make our way down there, we'll both be crawling through the...
Yeah. Collaps right there, yeah.
Never a dull moment, Randy. Tom, Greg?
Two quick items, Your Honor. Andrew Fangman, myself, Greg Jenkins, and Kurt Weiss attended the Vision Iowa Cat Grant Board Meeting yesterday, nine hours for a timed 10-minute presentation, and it did great. Answered a few questions, and we'll be back on a monthly basis to provide updates on our project before the Vision Iowa Board. Next meeting's in December, excuse me, in May, in Des Moines, rather than Algonah. Much better drive. And second item, I sent out some information earlier in the week on tax increment financing, and I did talk to Greg Jenkins today as well. I understand that the Iowa Chamber Alliance is also registering in opposition to the TIF House Senate Study Bill 225 as well, and I'd encourage you to contact our legislators. That bill has two damaging propositions within the, within that bill, very, very important to City Muscatine, so.
Who is promulgating the parts we don't like?
Well, the bill is brought forward by Representative Tom Sands.
Tom Sands, yeah.
It's in Ways and Means. It came out of Ways and Means.
Okay. I don't know if there's an interest group that was...
I don't know of any interest groups. Tom, Representative Sands is typically the generator of the tax increment financing legislation, but those, the, the public, the public buildings prohibition and the, basically the elimination of our, in Muscatine's case, the elimination of our, of our two districts that don't expire because they are pre-1995, which are also the fund, the largest funders of our economic development programs that we're creating, the work that's going on, and the South Intif District specifically is a huge asset to City Muscatine, and, you know, the small business programs that we, we've created here recently, and, and the Chamber's contribution, the administrative and economic development programs that we have are in large part funded through that TIF district, and if that goes away for communities like Muscatine, that, that's a very, it'd be an unvery, excuse me, a very unfortunate thing for, for Muscatine and others. So.
Okay, and I have nothing, any other business, council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It is adjourned.
Hey, Dave? Dave, you got a second?
Yeah, I'll tell you.